All right, I'd like to officially call the June twentieth, twenty-three, uh, important meeting to, uh, order. We have with me tonight, we have Ellen Rosenfelder Vice Pair, Aaron Underhill, our clerk, Mike Zenzki Town Administrator, and Perrin Borre de Marzo, the fifth town administrator, class agreement manager. So, uh, we'll get the meeting started now, couple announcements. Let's say single announcement. Uh, there is a carnival coming to town, if you haven't noticed. We have the, the, uh, rent department has reorganized the, uh, carnival, it stopped a while during COVID, but June twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth. There'll be carnival out on the, uh, not now as I look out the window. But from six to ten PM on the twenty-third, one to ten on, uh, twenty-fourth, and one to five on the twenty-fifth. Right games and delicious food, it says, to the people there. All right. You need stuff to have a point there? Um, I, tonight, um, we're excited to have a police officer coming on board. Uh, in your package is a letter from the Chief of Police, Chief of Honor. Uh, I'll read second of that letter. Please consider the appointment of Angela Bonzavac. Did I have that correct? To the Division of Full Time Police Officers. This is my new position for the department, it is a replacement. Officer Logal can transfer out of the department. Miss Bonzavac will be filling the vacant position. Miss Bonzavac began her career in law enforcement with our department as a Public Safety Dispatcher in two thousand nineteen. At the end of two thousand twenty-one, she had an opportunity to become an officer with the Toronto Police Department. Miss Bonzavac graduated from the Boyle's Police Academy in May of two thousand twenty-two. In her short time on UConn, she has obtained her health and wellness instructor certification, academic instructor development certification, special assault investigator certification through the National Security and Justice Training Council. She is a well-rounded, motivated individual that will be involved in this. She has successfully completed and passed her physical, but screen background, theory, and psychological exam. So, I am upon the recommendation of Chief of Police, I am appointing Miss Bonzavac as a full-time chief officer uh, to the Miller's Police Department, and I'm happy to be able to ratify that one subject.
Hey, I'm on. Uh, I move that the board vote to ratify the town administrator's appointment of Angela Bonzavac as a full-time police officer for the town of Millers. Thank you.
The move is seconded to ratify the appointment of Angela Bonzavac, full-time police officer, to the town of Millers. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and unanimous. So, thank you. Congratulations. Do you feel like saying a few words?
First of all, good evening. Uh, thank you to the board for, I think it was, oh, seven. She was great when you were here, as a dispatcher, um, Officer Johnson, Grant Burrow, at the end of May, and fortunate enough to have, you know, providing on our department that speeds volume to the hospital department and the members that work there, uh, they had, it was a great culture within the police department, and it's a real instrument to run offices instead of, um, other offices, if you want. And I appreciate that. Again, to reiterate, uh, we think it did the per post. All we're inclined to do than that before the transfer was, uh, including background, core, structures, albeit at an accelerated pace, comes last, and I'm thinking more for that as well. At this point in time, I'd like to call off Officer Bonzavac and Chief of Father, Chief of Police, to, um,
Do I have moved the department chief officer to the fore again, please?
Will this be effective immediately? For tomorrow, or when?
When does it affect? Working, and could it?
My girl.
Mr., you're gonna say? Raise your hand, repeat after me. I am somebody's way, you're filming. Hi, Angela Bonzavac.
Hi, Angela Bonzavac.
Do some with where?
Do some with where?
When I support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Bylaws of the town of Ellis.
The bylaws of town of Ellis.
And the rule of regulations and all lawful directives of the North Police Department.
And the rules, regulations, unlawful directives of the police department.
And then I will form the duties.
That I will form the duties.
You can come by the call me.
Can come by the call me.
Police officer of the town of Millers.
As a police officer in town of.
In good faith, and that's my ability.
In good faith and best judgment.
Congratulations. You're a proxy.
This was a reading, all of them.
Well, thank you. It was very good. It was very good, very good. Thank you. Yes, for the question.
You guys want?
Yes, everybody wants them.
You want us over here? Good. Search everybody. Yes, we're closed up. Close. They're closed. Probably there. All right, congratulations, you filed. Nicely done, thank you.
May give, may give, may give.
Congratulations again.
Definitely.
What happens next?
Right. They shut off, they blew it down, and so. Yes, thank you very much. Yes. This is my, why?
Going all here, it's a party, but.
Favor. Late, tell you that, so. Make your best move.
Okay. Yeah.
Yes.
Was, I'm not the alternative building inspector, are we? All right, next item. Okay, the next item is the appointment of the office building commissioner. Um, here is a letter from the Building Commissioner, Chief Packard. We didn't advertise this position internally, we need one application without, for Robert Hoggery. This is Peter, our building inspector, has written this letter. As you know about it, Morgan, dear, the building department for a key years now, it's not even changing the process. He's knowledgeable and experienced, and he has been in town. They have here a recommendation to the appointment of the alternate building commissioner position. Want to be able to fill it, and maybe one of the chief or a very dear, look, you know, inspectors who have gained a permanent knowledge, who is zoning for private. So, on that recommendation, you and I am actually the board to ratify my appointment, that's Mr. Henry, and I think
Ready? I move that the board vote to ratify the town administrator's appointment of Robert Hoggery to the Division of Full Time Building Commission of the town of Millers. Second.
If you can move and seconded to ratify Robert Hoggery as the alternate building commissioner of the town of Millers. More favor?
Aye.
Uh, as unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Hoggery. All right. Yeah. Yeah.
So, tonight we had a request from two different, uh, business owners, owners of staff, and also a move with Italian Deli. To put out some sort of signage that would just say, um, temporary or short-term parking, um, for two different spots in front of me. Um, they've been having some trouble with parking for long term and not in the long term. Um, and even just takeout places, they will hopefully get something that would be temporary. And I know Melissa Vito is here from staff. Do you need me to, do you want to come over and say? So, we did run this by, um, she sent this out, we sent this to both, uh, Chief Safaya, as well as DPW Director. Who were both amenable to the idea, they said, um, the police can't really do much about it, they're not going to, you know. They find people, but they are amenable to putting the signs out to persuade people regarding for a long period of time, and perhaps parks down the road at the same wrong side. And it was only requested that you can maybe actually to decide what.
Right.
Because you can get signs, you know, on posts that are temporary, that just be out during business hours, or maybe sign from a building, you know, of like you.
Yes, so we have four spots right in front of our, um. Um, we were thinking one of them at least, um, there's a utility pool, uh, maybe making up a handicap spot, if we don't have any. I think we have talked about it briefly, down Exchange Street, there's really no, um, designated, no cap spot. Um, and when that utility pool is there, that would be a sign that we could probably mount and keep and have it be not just for us, but for anybody, universal, for anyone. Um, and then the other spots, just during our business hours, to have some signage out front, that there's like a fifteen-minute um, parking for, um, for staff. Um, this just alleviates, um, for our customers, we have a lot of customers that have families and elderly people, and it's difficult for them sometimes to find parking, and now, um, since COVID, where we've really gone into more takeout place, that it just makes it convenient for them and safe. That nobody has to walk, you know, down the street or anything like that. Uh, and it would be signage that we would pay for, um, not asking the town to do anything as far as that goes. And like Karen said, something else, we put out when we open, and it goes in when we close. So, at night, we close early, eight o'clock, so then if anybody else fell here, it's not a problem.
We're gonna have to do something, and then, you know, I've talked to Jim, it'll have to be something that obviously will block the sidewalk.
Right.
Um, for, you know.
When it would have been, like, no, right, as are.
And they needed to do trouble, obviously, they could do, you know, for the building.
Yep.
And then Carrie here as well, so Carrie's the owner of the street lane. Um, so I had invited her as well, yes, right there in the block, to see if she had any.
Is this, I don't, is this anything different that you thought was gonna happen when this business opened? When this business opened, and you knew this was your parking, public parking? Anything different than when you opened a couple of years ago? I, you know, now we're gonna change it, she's gonna get two or three, I might want two or three. Next one's gonna want two or three, so I want the horse. But it's not, we have cameras, wanting to help, you know, you know, it's like helping that business. I want to help, like, her customers not coming so much in my parking lot, and I don't know if that's gonna make a difference or not, so I don't know if they I see, you know, the spots out there. It's right there, honey, just don't want to park like that, and then back out again. They still welcome to come right in my, for my sign say, if you're going to park in home, right? I don't know if that's gonna make a difference.
Yeah, I have, I have a lot of questions, but, um, there's more for handicap parking space than just putting a sign up it, right?
Right.
Wider. Right, they need shot, real signage, they have, they have extra. You don't have to steal a half of another one and cross it.
I want the idea to, for Exchange Street, not just.
All right, so that's a whole number.
You can help the in front of your, maybe a, yeah, area, but not for, but.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, but if a little stuff. Higher up, closer to the church, than this not park, because of the entrance.
Right in front of, um.
And right in front of you, and it sits there for hours.
Well, we are right next to it. Two victory lane, so we have four spots, street parking, right in front. And like she said, we had this conversation, um, you know, parking, picking them, saying, I remember people bringing it out, and we were over. It wasn't really in issue, so speak then, I think, again, now, since we've gone through COVID and it's become primarily takeout, we have, you did a run, and it is the people kind of coming in, coming out.
I see that too, because they're doing, we want more takeout when we ever have, kids coming in and out, takeout, takeout.
Which times of the day we notice is there will be cars that will pull right in front, and they are blocking that part, and are in there for over two hours. We've had some people in front that are there over two hours. And we don't have, the only parking we have is the street parks, and especially right in front. Uh, Victory Lane is in a better position, they have a huge lot in front, they have the street parking right in front as well. Uh, it just becomes a little more, you know, for me.
I want you to come up with names for my.
All right, in the company, okay, people, sorry, my.
How do you think?
So just trying to honestly make it a little more convenient and a little safer too, for, for our customers. Um, we get a lot of people that come in, like I said, with kids, elderly, and it has been a complaint that we've heard of them, and the parking isn't fantastic on Exchange Street. Uh, but just to have, like I said, we're only open eleven to eight. So, it wouldn't necessarily been, I think it would actually alleviate having anybody kind of pull in next door if we can. Uh, the same way they get control of parks in front of them, which I can't control who goes into their lot, it's difficult. But I do know that on Main Street, the liquor store, it's this right on Main Street, they have a sign on the street that is a, um, some fifteen-minute parking for their business. Where's that?
The one that's still right around Main Street?
Yeah, what is it? Yeah, the one in, um, Brave. So there's a, there is a sign, and they have one, and there is a sign on, thank you. On the street there, that had, well, a fifteen-minute.
Say, which is why I respect ordering as well, because I, if you're going, you just, if you say yes, you're going to allow a seat half of that from a free business, it came from a one or not. Um, and again, the only problem, um, or not, it's not a problem, but the only thing to keep in mind is that, again, the police are not going to take it, they cannot, let people from this morning, persuade people, and say, hey, just FYI, can you let people go in? Police people are gonna be kind and perfectly responsible today.
And I don't think it would hurt to have, kind of, going down the road in front of, I mean, the barber shop is the next, is next door on the other side, that all the other businesses, I mean, if they, like she said, we've seen such a huge uptick in takeout. So if you do play, you know. And that is really difficult parking. So, there are a lot of parking.
I'm getting trouble picking up, if you're, Sagan down.
Yes, yes, I got.
Because of the business with John at the used auto place, but. That's, I'm, I'm kind of miserable.
Yep.
Being we.
Yep.
So, yeah, I understand the problem, I'm not sure that we can follow this question, I might be in bigger question with the yeah, because that whole area, the Economic Development Committee is looking at hard, and this is something that probably should be discussed with them, and we can have it put on, you talk about, up there on the next agenda, I'm not trying to push the solution, right solution. It's inside three from Sagan, three for you, and yeah, three for each of the restaurants on there, it's gonna start really eating up.
You think just the restaurants, not the doggy daycare, the barber shop, the hairdresser? I do think, I just think they might jump on board.
I also did that barber during the day, a lot of times, I've never had a problem during the day. And I mean, could open, yeah.
Yeah, we drive in by, I haven't seen a huge issue during the day, at least going to the barber shop to look, right? Um, I do think if, if, if the business is, is primarily takeout, as some of them are of strip, I think something like that does make sense, it doesn't mean people are respected, but something like that, if it's, you know, not a certain amount of spot, you know, I think it could make some sense. Um, even, even restaurants, like chain restaurants have certain, some parking spots in front of, say, like, for a area, whatever, you know what I mean? Just for the convenience of the customer, so, I mean, I, I certainly don't think it's a bad idea, but I do, I do agree with Craig that they are looking at that whole area for development, and, uh, you know, there is a better solution that they might have, like, so down here.
And maybe the solution that we got to make is four spots on the street that pick up, and pick up home in fifteen minutes, so that all, everybody shares it, because but, but I, not for the solution tonight, but I think we can bring that, bring that out of development. Give some ideas, and you can turn around and break into this, and then we discuss, um, because I, I'm sure you're doing pickup also.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, maybe if there are four places in total on the street that will, where it probably picks up, and like, some, you like, giddy wrap.
And you do, we even, we'll remove the five o'clock that. High and inter-rack.
But, well, well, it's an idea. And I, I, I am afraid of opening it up for every shop requesting, you know, three.
Even if you did one in front of each section.
Yeah, maybe you spread out.
Spread it out. Yep. Yeah, because it doesn't make sense for all of them, because I don't know, I've never been, I've never gotten my hair in fifteen days, so.
But even that doggy daycare, I think they just drop the dogs out and leave again.
Right, I know.
Is anybody looking at the the angle parking while we're talking?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, the economic, I believe the Economic Development Committee has had some problems about that.
Well, that's the, it's the angles in front of our stuff.
Yeah.
All right, we're saying it's all the way down, all the way down the street.
Probably.
You're, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It was, yeah.
Yeah. They found there was sort of, up the road, yeah, but we, we aren't talking about every street, that's, development, we don't have a lot, and it's
You know. Well, the other question was, if you're moving, you go parking, you left, you go real far, you're, you're, you're already, right, there's no.
If you're a parallel, if you're.
Trying to change that, so.
Think it was gonna widen the road and have parallel sides, as we talked twenty years ago.
All right, we'll, we'll bring it up with the Economic Development Committee, I don't know the time, but we'll get it on the next agenda, yeah. And we'll come back with a solution, not, we have to get someone to notice, we're talking about something, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, I'm pretty neat that, with your chair, we could certainly look into the, uh, handicap spot, anyway.
I'd be interested in handicap.
It must be enough, or they wouldn't have allowed you to.
Well, there's supposed to be one somewhere.
Somewhere. I don't know where it is.
Typically, there's a certain amount of typically, because this isn't a typical question, takes the square footage of all the retail, and there's a formula, right? How many handicaps, and then how many band handicaps, it's a whole thing.
That's what's happening when they open, and I'm hurting, I guess, you remember what that, something like, we'll look at.
I don't remember, yeah, I don't remember the parking.
Right. But good for bringing it up.
Yeah.
You did some nice math.
Well, there's so many businesses, so everybody would benefit from having it, so more organized.
That's right.
I want our businesses to thrive, it's been everybody.
Right, yeah.
All right, we'll come back with some.
Thank you.
You can get out when we need to get, and I'll, I'll come back to you, get out once on the economic. Somebody ever.
What's going on right now?
Uh, maybe that. Business. I've got the air.
Thank you. This is, this is email, or we'll get it from.
All right, we're going to have to wait on the dog hearing until, um, eight o'clock, because somebody might want to, because I will just. So we'll move on to the other items, the, uh, DPW Lawn Mower. Uh, like, uh, Chief Packard, um, West, from DPW, um, director, uh, asking the board, um, contract, um, with for F Y twenty-four for, so seventy-two inch zero-turn mower, um, from the gold for power equipment, for a pot, not going to see fifteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. And, um, so this evening, I'm asking the board to vote to approve that contract and authorize me to sign that on the cap board. And again, that's for FY combo.
Uh, I move that the board vote to approve the FY twenty-four contract for the purchase of the seventy-two inch zero-turn mower for the DPW from North Park Car Equipment. Our cost rate will see fifteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, and you're authorized to the town administrator to sign the contract, and you have.
So, and that's, this coming out of their operating budget, or this, or this more? You probably said it, this is coming out of their operating, I think, operating, yes, and, um, I can't believe it, they're, they're rapidly, and, uh, these people are, they're very difficult to get, yeah. You know, now we're gonna have to wait for some kind of, you know, less beautiful. Um, and what, what's, what's this need right now? Is it, um, anything in particular? Uh, I believe it's the fact that the, the other lawnmower is, is really just at the end of its useful life, my understanding, if I have it correct, there's one renewed thing we had actually gotten from, um, Lenell, kind of me. Okay, well, this has been moved and seconded, um, the only comment I'd make is, I'm sure the capital planning committee is going to wish they were consulted on it, but it's an obvious need in the base of the budget, so. We had hoped could make through with the sign, unfortunately, it's not the end. Okay, I have to move and second it all in favor?
Aye.
Pause, that's unanimous. Slow walking, right? We don't just do all of this, probably, just do all this, we might be, next, we can, thanks again. Let's talk about select four goals, yes, all right. What I did was, I took a moment, and I took all the notes that we had, and I would copy. Now, I'm trying to break it into large categories, and part of me says, like, most of management is what we have to do anyway, buy level service funding for all departments, because, yeah. We consider funding, funding god-level services for part of departments to, to, to allow. Um, this, that didn't do it. Uh, we have to come up with a solution for the HCA funds, um, again, let's just do it a little bit. Um, we talked about consolidating services, I tried to use broad sweeping categories on that. So field maintenance, senior services, other events that have opportunity to that, a long, I think, any member of administration, so an opportunity to pursue, and then reduce a lot, uh, reliance on outside consulting services that the town can hear that you want. With that on there, see if it all fit into that category. At any time, if anyone could be through, if you would like to jump in and make a comment. Just move quickly, so we can get back to that. Stop on second, when we hit something. Um, finish the, uh, Um, finish the, uh, um, reallocating the direct indirect hospital in. You can do third of the way through this year. Um, and Ellis, what you and I talked about, that Aaron was, you know, fully loaded budget. This isn't promoting, you don't have payroll, that would under attack when she sees it. We just need, I would like to see a budget that shows the grants and all the grant funded items. It's not going to go to town meeting for a vote. Because obviously you can't vote on grants because it comes to the grant to give it to you. But at least to give this an idea of what's included in our budget. Um, should we lose grants and and how much additional funds the county is bringing in nights that grant one? And then our personal favorite is change the charter to allow the, uh, administrator and finance director to approve the warrants. Payroll and, um, and, uh, accounts payable in place of the select board. And we may want to put in, uh, payroll and accounts payable. I don't want people to misunderstand that and think that you'd be approving. How meeting one. Um, and again, that's very much, you haven't sat in the seat every twice. About twice a week, we get emails, have to be approved. Within thirty minutes, uh, to look at, and I have yet ever hit the deadline. Thank you colleagues for. Doing that. But.
No, no, we're so.
Yeah. So it's, uh, and it's just, it's just authorizing payment without select board authorization if you have to pay. And we are the three that have the least day to day involvement with most things, policy, not operational. So anything on the financial side that's missing?
Okay.
Uh, enterprise funds, I touched on the sewer, you know, investigate all options to manage it, pass it out, include purchase. Um, you know, low toilet, whatever options exist. I think I tried to make it more broad than, uh. Than last year, we're talking about that insurance. Um, grants for feedbacks, obviously, that's something we'd like to secure, continue to work on. And then get quarterly meetings with the enterprise fund to discuss the status of their budget. Anything missing on the enterprise? Uh, infrastructure. And I'm giving you my four big categories that I I might think of the town running, um, infrastructure. Uh, road and sidewalk repair, continue that program. We put millions into it over the last several years. I'd like to see that continue at whatever level feasible. And then investigate the use of open land. Specifically, the Lansing Mills building, the Ellis School. Um, open space, options, including capacity and broad property. Create the list of town owned parcels and see which are available for, um. Disposal, um, if there's anything we can sell, uh, to let, don't correct the owners on parcel, and it's carved out next to them, too small to build on, or too small to use, they might not have that in the property. And then you, and continue to work with Millis Housing and, uh. Uh, in the MBTA zoning. This, the, continue working. Housing, that's lower case city affordable, I'm not saying. Through the MBTA zoning and the state senior housing program.
Which ties in with the.
Yeah.
Town on land.
See, that's the same section of everything. Look at you, but they're right in. And then, uh, improve our software and online resources. We specifically talked about. Certain committees needing new software, certain, uh, website improvements, online licensing. I think comprehensively, you know, the full time IP director, we can call this. Aaron, I think that encompass your desire to provide any software. Yeah.
My only, my only thoughts. Lots could be.
Yes.
Is. In terms of it. Achieving specific goals when they are super broad. It is hard to kind of knock things. But I I obviously I'm going away with it. That's a, that's a. Thought.
It was, I wasn't writing goals like I would write them for my job, where I can accomplish an old for six months and, uh.
Right.
And check mark. Yeah, and but thinking these are the areas we should focus our effort, because we're really effort driven. Not.
Not.
Not task driven, because and I, it's hard, because we can propose all we want, it's a change, it's not meeting on the vote for it, have we failed or not?
Right.
You know, and we can, we can. Fix some of the software stuff. But if the capital funding committee under the new chair decides to excel, we have a new chair, and that's really well. They'll have another reform. And if we don't do dog licenses or whatever online, but we put. DPW dump stickers.
Yeah.
Have we failed, you know, so that's why I'm trying to keep it in a period of emphasis.
And, uh, one other thing.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, that's fine. The only other thing, I know we're not going forward, but can we, um, entertain maybe revisiting the joint where this was quarterly?
Yes. Yeah. And then we start looking what we've accomplished and re.
Right.
Because things are gonna present themselves. As we. Yeah, if we accomplish, I mean, if we do something with this parking issue. Not that it really fits under any of these, but that would be an economic development.
Like infrastructure.
Yeah. So. So then, how we get into the more fun and more, you know. Day to day impact, some services and programs. So one of them, the first one is increased services for senior. That's broad, that could go as far as a center, it could go for renovation of the center, it could go for additional staffing. Could be Bishop Library School, it could be anything, but I'm waiting to see what director makes sense to go up. Rail trail keeps bubbling up, and that's something I think does deserve a stand alone, as a pretty precise. Um, and then causes for celebration, including recognizing citizen of the year. Um, one of the, uh. The Boston Post.
Yeah.
Yes. And so we can. And then the Lansing Mills Award.
To encourage. Was talking to, um, Jen at the library.
Yeah.
She was part of the, we used to do a little prize.
Yeah.
Where did that go? So she's gonna try to do something, not now. The next. That's right.
And then the second item was right there, they had pride of that. And it could be a pride event if we're covering this month, or it could be even Millis Town Day, or, you know, how we went. And see if you can burn it maybe towns up sometimes. Really, that's a pride, that's a, that's not a select board. But item that's like there is record. And Millis Friday could be a totally independent organization, like a run back school that comes to us to ask for a date. Um, the advantage is not having select for doing, first off, you don't have to close the meeting in advance, you don't have to. Have forums, you don't have to keep the minutes, but we have, there's a lot to figure out on there, but I'm really, really see if there's. People that want to volunteer to do that, not volunteer for a town board, basically. Uh, and then our role is to give them the date. You know.
Definitely, yeah, as as an aside.
Yeah.
I would like to see pride flags. You know, maybe every color flag, you know, will be American flag. Something like that for for pride, being what Medway is, is really blue there also. Or like the field of flags, we could have a rainbow of flags on the front line.
Yeah.
Just something. Something in in something fun and something that's relatively, you know, loco.
Yeah.
So. You know, I did.
That, and that's what I, I did there is talk about that.
I don't think.
You can build it. On day.
Okay, yeah, right, right.
And then, uh, improve communication with the, you know, standard live stream meeting, which we. I see holding on and off, but I assume we are, um, continue improving clear gov and, uh, website improvement generally. Is there something? There's a, there's more specificity in the finance, but that's what we do. We'd like to see that.
I have, I have one thing I want to.
Correct.
I mean. Right.
Mining.
I mean, it's. And but it's deep, so you can check on underneath, underneath, but I like it. You like this kind of, um. You know, organization. One thing I wanted to add was, we we're talking about pride, knowing everything. I want to talk of. You were, you know. I don't want beautification of Millis to be one day. But here. I think that we need to make a priority. Me as a board, I would like as a board. To make a priority of keeping Millis looking good. And that includes. Rewacking the. The weeds that go, I'm gonna be specific here, we started broad, I'm gonna go. Rewake the weeds that grow between the curve and the sidewalk. And sweep. Sweep the gutter. What you call. The curb and the round, right, called gutter.
Yeah.
Sweep it. You can't even see our curb anymore, most of them. These are the things I noticed. Then I know you noticed one oh nine.
Yeah.
In the last.
We do have street sweeping machines, yeah.
I know, but I don't know, I'm not sure what the schedule is, but I would really like it to be a priority for the town, and I don't know if that includes in. A monthly report. Where have been, or done, kind of a thing.
So this will be more DPW maintenance rather than beautification. With the.
Yes. Yes. It used to be a priority. I know that there are priorities. I know PFAT is a priority, which DPW, as we know, has hit out of the country.
Yeah.
Better than any other town in the country. I think that the snowplowing, I know it's now, I should, yeah, but typically, I know this, because I go from town to town. So. It's just one of the countries I know.
Psycho.
It's just priorities, and whether or not. Is or isn't, or I hope we can get some help. I know we don't have anybody, I think. For doing, I know that you need license to, um, very, to spray weeds. Um.
Yeah.
For some reason, we don't have that. But if we make it a priority, now in the town.
That on the list. Then I'll bring back the final director next meeting. This, this is pretty much there. Kind of like to keep it the one page, but make something else, added a line exactly at one page.
Well, when we live stream the meeting.
Yes.
Um, we, we do do that. The, the thing that had come up. For consideration, when I was chair was allowing it to be inter. So if somebody is going to zoom in, um, I was going to moderate, somehow moderate that. So in terms of the. I can't think of the word right now, but if somebody is disabled, if somebody is, um, sick and doesn't want to spread whatever they have, you know, um, things like that, still be able to. Go to the meeting. So that's just something to consider. I don't know where it sticks, because if I did, I would have done it.
Yeah, we just need to make sure it's moderated and track it. Sure, for a bit.
I think I do. Do you follow? Kind of both.
Yeah.
So.
Maybe we can.
Yeah.
But without having a moderator on duty, this meeting would not be different. That, because we couldn't conceivably work that out, everybody's in the room. But we did, uh, capital planning committee that, uh, with nobody to turn it off. So, um, you really like a skill. Yeah. Person.
Yeah.
At the meeting. No corners, you know, free, and helping people come on, be a.
Which is none of the people sitting at the table.
Right. Right.
Well, the thing is like if Karen wouldn't do that, it would clear out of our whole class of meetings. So then other boards and committees. Maybe not have any staff or very few staff at their meetings. So that's true for consideration because one thing that would have to be reviewed and addressed.
Yeah.
Without interacting.
The great boom, whether.
I know the. Yeah, because he can work with the Millis Community Media. I remember one of the people who doing the meeting, but actually even here running. Yeah. Yeah, or somehow like that was a part of.
And then we can just get our meeting doing it that way. So, so let's hope. Well, we, we put it on the list, interactive next door.
Because you, more point for everything, right?
We have the capability.
And quite honestly, it's, um, you know, it, it makes it easier for them, you know, for even for us, you know.
Really lonely guy.
I feel safer. All right, uh, select board appointees. I'm gonna start with, we've had two resignations, try to ask that right now. Lorie, we have Lorie Harms down from the Council on Aging. So we will be looking for another. And, um, Steve Catalano is stepping down from school committee. Take the thirtieth of the month. So there is a process in place where the select board and the school committee need to jointly make an appointment. So we will start accepting applicants for the school committee vacancy. The select board and school committee will, will do that point of choice. I'm not sure we can, is it like one vote per person or is it?
Yes, so you need jointly, yeah. And, and so the remaining members of the school committee will come to a joint meeting of the select board. And, um, we'll discuss candidates if there's more than one. Um, and then we'll be able to all vote, and it's majority vote of, um, everyone present voting, um, at that meeting.
And then whoever steps in as the chair for either the Council on Aging too, basically they fill what that person's current term by. So it may just be for a year and then they have to get reappointed to reelect.
The thing Steve was up next year.
I think so, I think.
Yes, but either way, that those temporary appointments of. And rolling up to the next day.
Oh, hey.
Even if this was in first year, it would, whoever was appointed by the joint committee would have to. Up the point for election next spring.
Yeah, there's one other one, the Board of the Center. The first member of the Board, Diane Intervene is residing in the Board of the Center, so we will absolutely need another someone to.
And we'll need somebody for the Board of the Center.
Correct, and that's a little bit more. And they have to go through a little bit of training. We would love to do that, and I know.
Your class.
The only other one that I know of right now is the Economic Development Committee is still looking for a person. Good, everybody.
All right, so we have a list in front of us. Um, we have two styles of doing this. They can read through these. Four pages, or I can, uh, I can, uh, just take the motion to have this list as presented. I did just have Diane remove.
No, Diane will still get reappointed until she said she would stay on until the weekend of September or until we find somebody else.
Thank you.
So we're gonna meet her.
Okay, since she's on page one. All right. Yes.
I move forward vote to approve the appointments I've listed in the agenda packet.
Moved it seconded to, uh, uh, through the full pages of appointments. Let's see, uh, the packet, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Very none, thus is unanimous.
Uh, we will close this tomorrow if anybody wants to look at it in the archives. Let everybody know who was reappointed, so.
Okay. Now we have. Letter to the.
I think we're gonna just.
We'll put that the next table. Uh, from the fully integrated firefighter Millis contract. We just handed out last meeting, that's correct, having that chance to review it. And the goal behind that was to take all of the memorandums of understanding. And roll it into one clean contract with, um, having looked it over and I, I just, you know. It seems to be basically what, it seems to be that. Right, too. And if the firefighters are in agreement and agree with it, then also that means that every, then they'll sign it and then we're gonna make a simple contract.
Okay, well, they, they approved that, the chief has approved that, Mike and I looked at it, so you have now looked at it. I see we have pretty much everybody.
So I move that the board vote to approve and sign the integrated collective bargaining agreement with professional firefighters in Millis local enforcement.
Second.
If it moved and seconded to approve the integrated contract, firefighter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously.
Uh, I just, we'll be doing the exact same thing with the SBIU contact and the police contact. Uh, for.
Just. Some unionization.
We're gonna go ahead and go.
Now we're a treaty contract negotiations. There now, he's heard. Know more about fish.
If you would like, please sign here, collect word.
All right, liaison updates are next.
Where am I?
Oh, that's your firefighter.
Yes, liaison.
Yeah, do you have anything on liaison?
I do.
Okay, please, how about Karen?
I don't think I do. Um, I just have a little review. Well, I just went through energy, which actually, um. But, uh, they're just talking about, um. They're talking about how they've already accomplished the low hanging fruit, you know, they have to get to the median and my knee. So they're trying to figure that out and no more work at all. Uh, but I went to the, um, uh. Charles River, my favorite place to go, pollution control. And, um, it was interesting, they're asking for the DEP and EPA and whoever else is for more capacity. They're asking for more. I forgot.
See, they get that worked out, so we will take credit.
It's simple, so it, it's interesting. And now they're doing everything that they need to do and trying to get to the high people. And, uh, they asked what the chances are and they said, you know, is it gonna be so? We monitoring that. That was interesting.
Right. And I went to the county meeting along with, uh, several other people from. So we attended the, uh, high county meeting and they, um, they're planning to open. Well, first off, there's an election on October twenty fourth, thank you, did not write that down, I was scribbling everything else. October twenty fourth, there'll be a district wide meeting that, um, every town in the district will come forward and, uh, and vote. And it's going to be a majority of those that vote, it's not a minority of towns. So, um, so it's going to be a total, the entire yes vote. So, um. It's part of one. Now, the interesting thing about this, this law was written pre, about two and a half. So this will allow, and they're required to have at least four hours, but not more than eight hours of election. That's the way the law is written. So we're going to have an eight hour election. We can't go longer than that. We can't do the typical thirteen hours, we'll have eight hours. I think it's noon to eight, noon to eight is what we call it. Now, the interesting thing about this is while it authorizes the school to be built, it doesn't appropriate any money for the building. The school's gonna cost, uh, two hundred and eighty three million dollars. They're getting about a twenty four, twenty six percent reimbursement rate on this school. Uh, if you remember, our school costs fifty million, forty one percent reimbursement rate. So, um, it's going to cost probably net about two hundred, two hundred million dollars. Yeah, it is, yeah. And so they have, if this is bonded, because we have to, there's a couple of ways you can fund it. If you're bed field or some of these towns are sending two or three kids, you could probably just absorb it into your technical operating. For them, but for us, the impact would be, uh. Based on current enrollment, four hundred and eighty two thousand dollars a year is how much it costs. Right now, our enrollment is sort of in the low. Yeah. So realistically, our, our cost will be between. Four hundred thousand best case is like, that'd be a little lower than our current enrollment and possibly up to eight hundred thousand. Back to our old numbers. And there's no override for that. The way that would be done, at the time, the dollar, the way that would be done would be true. Unless we have funding mechanism built into it, um, we're gonna have to find existing funds to cover that four to eight hundred thousand dollars. And we're definitely finding nine hundred thousand, we'll picture that every year, okay? So there likely be an override that would have to be done to fund it, um, but it's not required. That makes this difficult. Unlike all of our votes that we've ever done, we've told people the school's gonna cost fifty million dollars, about you this much per year on your taxes. They're just telling us, you want a new school? Don't worry about it. And then we have to move the money up. So, um, it would be about a hundred and eighty dollars for five hundred, a hundred eighty, eighty dollars a year for a five hundred thousand dollar amount. Ninety thousand per year for our two hundred and fifty million. So, so the hundred eighty dollars per year probably close to the dinner house. That's not what being voted, but being voted is whether we build it or not. So we'll be a lot, discussing this a whole lot more as we get close to it. I just want to give everybody a heads up, it's gonna be a really big. The plan is baked, we can't come back and say provide a cheaper option, this is the option. You know, this is what it will be. Um, they, they, it absolutely does look like, you know, a new school is needed, not diminishing the need for it. I'm more concerned about funding it before.
So that's really a free, two and a half from, uh, does not really involve. It goes down, I can count the population to and a half, there will be limits. So, you know, we'll be looking at this, making some recommendations for the board. Um, we're gonna need some research as to whether or if some questions can be added to that balance. Exclusion, we vote, I don't vote in favor of it, we'd also support the death, we'd hopefully. Um, these are the things that we're looking at in, uh, full of summer. And we'll definitely be having some follow up, even on the town history, there's the district. Having a follow up meeting and trying to. Right, how the administration. Having more. House, these classes, they don't have.
Right, and that's the problem, but, you know. So we'll be talking about that at great length throughout the, until October twenty one. Twenty third, twenty twenty. But, um, and we've got a lot to learn on this, this is the one this year. All right, and, um, last item, and then we'll get to the hearing, it's about eight o'clock, and we're doing pretty good. We have, uh, um, um. We have minutes to approve. Bye, closing that gap.
Do you remember these?
I'll then, um, we'll take a motion on the minutes. Don't take minutes.
I move the board vote to approve the following select one meetings, eleven, one, twenty one, twelve, six, twenty one, of twenty, twenty one, and one, ten, twenty two.
I'm being seconded to approve the, uh, minutes of eleven, one, twenty one, twelve, six, twenty one, twelve, twenty, one, ten, twenty two. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and. Then we're done.
Oh, so you're really. I know.
All right, and we, uh, we are, we have to say exactly the, against our team and really sell all of that. I did, I'm supposed to be.
Yeah, I was born in this.
Yeah, I think that the process is probably will start with the animal control, just to be the first hearing that I'm going to share. Aaron, if you want to come up.
Only can say here if you want. All that, Eric, and I know we've all met Kelly Warren, who are now assistant ACO.
All right, um, I think we have to start by calling the meeting to order. I know. Read notice packet.
Hold on.
Okay, here we go. Pursuant to, uh, for one forty, section one fifty, the Massachusetts general law, the Dallas Select Board has received a dangerous dog complaint regarding Bentley. A dog owned, owned by Rebecca Martin of Six Country Circle, Millis, Mass. zero two, zero five, four. You're invited to attend the public hearing, which will be held regarding this matter at eight P M. on Tuesday, the twentieth, day of June, twenty twenty three, in Memphis Memorial Building. Room two twenty nine, nine hundred Main Street, Millis, Mass. zero two, zero five, four. This has been posted and mailed, um, sort of by letter. We just need to go to the board over here. People looked up the hearing.
Uh, I make a motion for the board to open the, uh, hearing for the dog complaint.
Move this, open the hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay.
I think you might pull the mic over.
Yeah. Okay, can you hear me? Okay. Uh, good evening. My name is Erin Mallett, and I am the Animal Control Officer and Municipal Animal Inspector for the Town of Millis in Medway. Tonight with me, we have Assistant Animal Control Officer Kelly Ward and Officer Tyler Angel from Millis Police Department, who have assisted in this matter, who can answer any questions from the hearing authority as to their involvement. We also have the public residents who have been impacted by the animal residing at Six Conference Circle. This department is anticipatory that the hearing authority will rise to the conclusion that the concerns and the situation in the neighborhood revolving around this dog from this address. Into the pedestrians and animals that do partake on public ways in this area. As you can see from my packet that I have submitted, the victim, the victim sustained multiple level five bites to both her extremities. From an unprovoked dog attack merely just out for a walk in her neighborhood. This department supports the residents in, in the neighborhood for their request to bring peace, tranquility, and reduce fear where they reside. But they may feel confident that they may walk down this residential cul-de-sac without being attacked or injured. In my professional opinion, there is a public safety issue. The department hopes that you will see that there is a dangerous component and will find it as such in the determination. So that an adequate management plan may be, may be imposed upon the residents. My recommendations to ensure the safety of the public is as follows. One, that the dog be humanely restrained, no tethering or chaining. Two, that the dog be confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog. Bench requirement suggestion is confined outdoors in a securely enclosed, in lock plan or dog run area upon the premises of the owner or keeper. Provided further that such pen or dog run shall be embedded into the ground. For not less than two feet, and provided further that within the confines of such pen or dog run, a dog house or proper shelter from the elements shall be provided to protect the dog. Three, that when removed from premises of the owner or the premises of the person keeping the dog, the dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain or other tethering device. Having a minimum tensile strength of three hundred pounds and not exceeding three feet in length. Four, that the owner or keeper of the dog provide to the licensing authority or animal control officer or other entity identified in the order information by which a dog may be identified throughout its lifetime, including photographs, veterinary records, microchip implantation, and proof of registration of the chip. Five, that the owner or keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance in an amount of not less than a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, six, the dog be altered so that, so that the dog should not be reproductively intact, sprayed or neutered if not already. And one of the options within chapter one forty, section one fifty seven is euthanasia. I believe we need to delve into this discussion as this dog has caused extremely traumatic injuries on its first bite. That coupled with not knowing the owner's capabilities of maintaining and managing a dog with dangerous aggressive behavior of this magnitude. With appropriate restraints and animal husbandry practices, the option should be discussed, also take into consideration the fact she has not had this dog for a long period of time. And we do not know if this dog has had a previous bite history. Thank you for your time.
Um, any other commentary?
So do we want to swear and everybody in before they speak? So we want to swear everybody in first, like you can just do everybody together, like do you solemnly, anybody that's wishing to speak? You got, one of you guys can do it. Yeah.
So I guess we want to ask, who would like? Try any. I think we can just, yeah. Yeah, the whole audience would want to raise their hands so they would have the ability to. So would you like me to do it? Yeah, do I got, well, give a guess one. Solely swear, I guess, do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth? And I'll be about to come on the matter of this dog hearing for you tonight. There you go.
Everybody who's.
Yes.
What you working on? All right.
Do you want us here still?
Well, yeah, if you want to stay here and then if people want to come up to speak individually, they can use the. I think so. I guess if you walk us through the timelines.
Say that again? The one that you read with all the, oh, yeah, with the tethering, I want to give her the copy of that. So I'm gonna make copies of this.
Timeline of the incident.
Yes.
Or you wrote up, so I don't want to just watch that.
Sure.
Points of, of interest, you know, part of the stuff.
So timeline of events, um, May thirteenth, uh, at approximately seven oh three P M., ACO Ward was dispatched to Six Conference Circle for a report of a dog bite. At that time, the bite victim Jane Jackson was already in the ambulance. ACO Ward spoke to Rebecca Martin about the incident and advised her that the dog. That her dog was to be placed on a ten day quarantine. ACO Ward viewed the dog through the window and then C A C O, ACO Ward's report further information.
I guess that, I mean, I have read this.
Yeah.
So I think the question would be, um, I guess a question. I'm open to what led up to the bite. We, we have where you arrived, but I didn't know the person who was making that. Seems you're on. Sure, so, uh, I think you're the, so if we, uh, if you could come up, if you would like to let up on the bike. Over there, yeah. You have to use the microphone.
Um, well, I was returning.
I don't say that didn't.
Oh, oh, uh, Jane Jackson. And, and I live at nine. Did you have that wrong? Um, I think that, um, perhaps the bite took place in. I'm really sure, but I live at nine.
So what led up to the bike?
Uh, I was returning home from, um, the walk and, uh. Two dogs ran across the street and I'll be honest, my memory of the incident is not great because to be honest with you, I think I wanted to hear some a little bit of, um, shock and trauma. Um, when the bite occurred, but, uh, so there were two dogs and, um. The one dog, uh. I think, uh, I think it bit my right hand first and then it bit my, um, left arm and. And then we came across the street to, um, destroy the dog. And I just like walked slowly home to my mom's house. I live with my mom, um. I just was trying to be slow and calm so as not to incite any further, uh. No, uh, biting from the dog, uh, I was wearing shorts and I was just afraid that like my bite was gonna be the next thing to be bitten and I was. I was like really scared about that because when my, uh, right hand was bitten, I like, I heard this. Which, um, that was, um, the bone. And both of, uh, I really think she wound on the left arm and then they were both bleeding and, uh. Uh, it was pretty, pretty traumatizing, um, and that, that's basically what happened, um. The dog didn't give any sign. That he was gonna bite, like there really wasn't any growling or barking or bearing of teeth. It was just a very silent attack and, uh. I am pretty familiar with dogs. I love dogs. Um, I recently moved back here in Massachusetts from San Diego and I actually volunteered at, uh, a humane society. In Encinas, California for five years and it was dogs all the time and, um, I really wasn't afraid of dogs and. And I, I just, I've never seen it. And I had to take a lot of, uh, dog, uh. Uh, classes. In terms of reading their body language and stuff like this and I, it just was odd that this dog was, it's playing and finds it and it's fighting. Really like business like fight, um. Followed swiftly by, by the other fight, but, um, I do want to say that, um, I'm not like. Could I say if I have any, if my opinion matters, I just would like the dog to be restrained a little bit because of burn one, but. I was, I never, the dog has already had a tough life and I just want the dog to have a breakdown. Any question?
Everybody has seventy questions.
I just got one quick question. You said there were two dogs, but only one dog attacked you?
Yeah. Yeah.
I would say, um, if anyone else is any questions, I would say if there's anyone else, I mean, other than maybe the owner that witnessed the attack or has any other firsthand knowledge.
Yeah. Maybe I'll saw the attack and like speak.
I'm sorry?
Miranda, I saw her on the window. She's not here right now. I didn't know that. I'd be like, oh, but oh, I didn't know what this was. She didn't know, but she did see the dog come across the road. And I know it's hearsay from me. That's not what she might, yeah, she didn't say that.
But yeah. For a while, but.
Yeah. You know, hearing is an official hearing, you know, it's people on
I'm sorry, I can't hear you on the recording. You just say who you are.
Well, Miller, I live at Seven Concord Circle where the attack occurred on the other side, you know, six is a coincidence. Uh, my daughter and my other granddaughter were looking out the window and my daughter had my granddaughter, oldest granddaughter, saw the dog come across and then looked away and then saw the 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 attackee, whatever you call it, and the arm saying, come and get your dog under control. She walked away after being bit. The actual bite she didn't see or couldn't couldn't say she did, but she saw the dog come across the tree.
That's right, yeah, great.
I didn't witness it, but I have something to say. Uh, my name is Erin Fuller and I live at five Concord Circle and I'm here tonight. Um, not for me, but for my two children who are six years old and twelve years old. Um, when I first moved to Millicent two years ago and I moved to our street, I was appalled that there were off-leash dogs running around the cul-de-sac and that these dogs would come into my driveway and into my yard. I would get out of my car and there would be a dog. And for my six-year-old, who is about this high, it was terrifying for her. She is afraid to go outside of our house alone. Um, I will not let my kids go outside without me because I have extreme anxiety about the off-leash dogs. Um, it makes me feel very uneasy and I I do not understand why they are not on collars and leashes. Um, I hear, like, I have heard from Becky that the dogs are friendly, but I don't think we can say that anymore. My six-year-old is afraid to go outside by herself. And when Jane got bit, all I could think was that this could have been prevented and it could have been anyone and these dogs need to be supervised and leashed and something has to change because this is dangerous. And I feel that my neighborhood neighbors as well as random people who walk down the street should not have to worry that they're going to be attacked by a dog. Um, and I really, really think something needs to change in terms of leashing or fencing or muzzling because it's scary. Thank you.
Besides this, these dogs around evidently. Um, there are other dogs off-leash or is it just most of these two have been off-leash?
It's these dogs.
These dogs, so it's not the whole neighborhood, it's this situation.
It's this situation, yeah.
Thank you. Can I just ask you a quick question? You mentioned Becky. Who's Becky?
Oh, sorry, Becky, the owner.
Oh, the owners.
Thank you.
That dog, uh, shortly after it was adopted, was like in the dark, uh, when I was walking down the street and it just kind of came up and said hi and, um, it was at that point in time, it wasn't, uh, aggressive or or anything like that. It just kind of came up and and said hi, but it was was leashed. I think that was shortly after it was adopted. Uh, that's just just to illustrate that there's a history, you know, the lack of being a really, yeah. And, uh, and my, my mom was walking, um, her dog. It was approached by several of these dogs and and our dogs are pit bull and, um, she luckily got down on the ground and was submissive, but um, if somebody had started a fight with our dog, like it could have been really disastrous. I mean, my, my mom is and, um, you know, our pit is really nice, but pets usually don't respond well to to being attacked and to and I, my mom was really afraid after that and, um, and again, luckily our dog was super submissive, um, but that could have been really, really disastrous. And that was like in the darkness as well. This was a different dog though. I think this is four hundred pounds. Uh, but, um, yeah, there's just a history of the dogs running around. My nephew also was exposed by the, which we have played for that incident or the.
Um, I guess we break, uh, the owner up now and ask the other question there. Yeah. Yeah. Have one clarifying question. Were the two dogs that you owned by, um, this is the, those were the the two dogs that bit you, the dog from your own?
Well, I mean, you're both both are dogs.
Thank you.
Her evolution is being dog, well, you're.
Okay, if you'd like to put the statement.
Did I state my name?
Yeah, please.
Rebecca Martin. Um, and, um, I totally agree about the safety of the neighborhood, absolutely. And um, the past couple of years, yeah, the dog had roamed and it was, um, I've had a very abusive whole size, but always be, uh, freaked, um, with them roaming in it. He's out of the house now, thankfully. Um, but, um, what happened is it was actually my fault. The dog, but I thought she was going to say hi. I thought she wanted to say hi. Um, and so I let them go. Nay, but so excited when she sees anybody from their household and so crazy. And what ended up happening is certainly still still somewhat puppy and, um, what happened, it just got overly excited since he doesn't have a history of biting or anything, um. But the rescue never experienced anything. Um, I actually, um, spoke to the vet the other day and said he couldn't speak to anybody on his behalf. Um, and it, so in that case, I separated them. They're not allowed to play outside together all, um, only inside the house. I have them where the shock collars now, um, and um, I started building a fence. I had always wanted one, but wasn't able to open it. So I was trying to figure out how I could do it, um, and I've finally been able to start making, I have most of the area, um, blocked, but I'm still trying to build like six day every day. I'm trying to work on it and thinking about it. Um, it's been very difficult because I have, it's just myself now and my daughter, pretty much I lost my mom and, um, my husband walked out for two months. It's been very difficult and it makes no, there's no excuse what happened, but I mean, I would never ever ever want anybody hurt, like Jane or anybody hurt, and especially children and everything. So it's just it, it's, I, I have something I don't like. It's every day like um, I have so much anxiety and, you know, I just, because I would never want anybody hurt that that it kills me that it just happens. Like I would never want that to happen and like I, I just, I just would never want, you know, that it it just had killed me. Um, and and the fact that he is such a sweet dog, um, that this happened, it just I mean, it was my stupidity. Um, and, you know, it, that was it was, it was my, it was my stupidity.
How long have you had?
And the rescue never had an experience, like never, because I adopted him specifically because he was so good with everybody. I made sure because I couldn't, I did not want to have the dog, you know, like I did not want to have that, you know, and in, it's just like, you know, I didn't want to, I don't want to risk anything. And so I specifically brought him because in the, in the, you know, his description, like he was great with everybody and I have a cat and a small dog and so I, you know, I've been um, you know, and if he was, um, if it wasn't like him being like, you know, a puppy, like, you know, just, he was too, uh, too amped up, I guess, you know, like he was frustrated. Um, I, if it was with that, then I would absolutely be holding him, um, if if he was aggressive in that, if it was malicious, I could say, if it was malicious. Um, but, you know, um, willing to do anything, you know, I, I don't, I don't take him on walk, um, anymore. Um, and, uh, you know, but I have a muzzle I've been working on with him. But again, like I said, I don't, I think that's the the vet said like moving around, maybe he's being able to be there or anything, um. And, uh, but I'm, you know, I, I I'm gonna, you know, I want to make this the best I can be and eventually if I can get a real fence, it would be wonderful. Um, but I'm making it, you know, I think that's going to help me fix it up more also if even, you know, but when I get sturdy and everything, um, but I'm always out there. Um, you know, have them where the E collars and I don't take them out individually now. Um, and, uh, I'm also working with Meg and retraining her so she doesn't get that excited. Um, um, because it's obviously it affected him too much. Um, so, um, I've been reworking with her as well, so.
Yeah, I I think that, um, looking over the list of the six items that were given to us by the animal control officer, I hope it drops, I mean, that has to be finished.
Yeah, yeah.
If if that's the direction we go, it's not like you can work on building a fence. We have to see a fence in a reasonable amount of time. We, we, we can't say you're making efforts towards it. We, we, you know, we have to have this hundred thousand dollar, uh, insurance bond. Those are, they're not, this is going to be basically, and these are the things that aren't optioned, you know, and this is the best case scenario. I just be clear, not, this is if we if we believe that it's not time to euthanize the dog. This is the, there's nothing less than these six items. And I'm going to hear from the animal control officer again about if I she mentioned or brought up the last option there too.
So I do have one, uh, thing to say. I did reach out to T J O originally where the dog came from. Uh, he was taken from a cruelty case. Um, and there was one prior bite that was to the vet and they did, um, associate that to being like a starved dog, so they didn't contribute it to like, he's a vicious animal. He's a starved animal and he loves treats. So they just kind of poo-pooed that one and then he did go to a rescue, so they didn't have very much more information other than that, but he did bite the vet at T J O.
What is T J O?
T J O in Springfield. It's a animal control facility. But I don't know why he was sent off to rescue. I'm not sure. But he wasn't, he didn't stay there.
I'm sorry, I'm I.
So he, he was taken from
They said to rescue.
He, so he, what, he was taken by animal control because he was a cruelty case. And then he was, and he was taken away from the shelter into a rescue. I'm not sure why animal control didn't keep him, why they chose to send him off to a rescue. I mean, we do the same thing, you know, if we find a go rescue to take the animal rather than staying in my care.
And the animal stays at the rescue or.
Yeah, and then gets adopted all through them, right?
Yeah, he was in a whole setting.
How old is?
He just turned two.
Well, the question I have is, um, we have a leash law in Millicent, right? And so why are people, some people in the audience saying that the dogs were routinely gnawing?
Um, they're off-leash on the property. Um, and in the past, my husband wasn't the best at washing them and.
But that's over now?
Yeah, now, like, I mean, I, I'm so like disgusted. I'm kind of sad, you know, I just.
So I have a question. Um, are there an electric fence?
No.
Okay.
Um, I use, um, I have to eat the shock collars. Um, but we were in the front, um, yard and I hated to be in the front yard, but my backyard, I had been waiting to get it. In here, I think there was a unbelievable and something like that. And thankfully, okay, that goes, still, my friends had been, I'd been waiting for them to come to clean it up for me so I could just go be in the backyard and then on, because I, I didn't even want to be in the front yard, but now, yeah, I mean, and, um, there's no need to go in the front yard at all now, so.
Sheriff, if you want to ask the officer.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna come next. Would you like to, uh, come up? Can you, hi. You were the responding officer?
Yeah, there was three of us.
Okay.
We got a call for a dog attack and they gave us the address in the Jackson house. We showed up and it was pretty gruesome. There was blood, a lot of blood. She was, um, really badly injured. Um, so she got transported. We went over to the owner's house and, you know, she admitted the dog was off-leash. The dog was inside. The dog was a king quarter, right?
Yeah.
Pretty big dog.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, other than that, you know, she admitted that the dog's off-leash. I mean, I forget if she told me the dog was rescued from like Robbins, like.
Um, Alvin Worcester.
Worcester. Yeah, it was like, I well, she got a question.
You have any questions, Greg?
I don't. Um, I, I guess the, was, uh, the owner right, uh, uh, the uh, she definitely was upset by that dog. Yeah, she, she was showing emotion. She wasn't. Yeah. She definitely said.
Was the management.
Yeah. She definitely knew what happened.
I don't have any questions right now. First time you've gone for that.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Um, does animal control routinely for off-leash dogs on the street? I mean, I know probably once we guys.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know.
Not, not in that particular area, not unless, and I've never been made aware of any issues in that area.
Right, um, I have a quick.
And, uh,
yeah. But yeah, um, as far as based on the situation, um, the nature of the neighborhood, your conversations with the owner. Um, you laid out basically two options. Do you feel that the, the option of the six requirements, um, if they were followed in a certain timeline, unacceptable, or do you want the board to consider the other?
I guess my concern is, is there are a lot of children in that neighborhood. If it happens again, will it be as bad? Will it be worse? Will it be a child? You know, I also worry about our other public safety that we have. If, you know, police or fire needs to get in there. You know, some, if something should happen to the owner, um, you know, what's that situation going to be like? I worry about their safety. Um, just the, I received an email, um, the other day from a resident that. Just the, I received an email, um, the other day from a resident that stated that the dogs are still on leash in the yard. I, I can't, you know, that, that's hearsay. I can't, I didn't see it. So I don't know if that's true or not, um. It's, for me, it's a, it's a tough decision. I mean, I don't know this dog's prior history either. I mean, and, and as far as the rescue state, there's no prior history, but we don't know what this dog's situation was like at home.
Um, I have, um, when you mentioned that people have seen the dog off-leash, I saw people nodding. Has somebody seen the dog off-leash since this occurred? Would you mind coming up and stating?
Becky is my neighbor, Beauty Carlson, fourth on the circle, and I didn't want to speak this evening. I just have Becky as a neighbor. We both love dogs. I've been involved in three mobile retrievers for over forty years. I have an optic with seven months old, right? About a third of an acre is that standing in the butts, you know, your backyard. And, um, she loves, the dog loves badly. You know, my dog runs inside Bentley, just kind of runs up and down on the sides. And I do need to relate. Um, when Becky first moved in, she had the dog work badly. And she wanted to take that hand to touch him. And that dog became. And I didn't record it. Now, again, we were neighbors. But the dogs still fit free and said, who knows, my yard, where, but the dogs don't know where one year that's next to us. And it was, I, I just never went inside yard. I have a six-year-old grandson that comes to visit my daughter. And that dog died, this dog replaced it. And I'm sorry, Becky, but to me, Bentley, and I, like I said, red dogs are known dogs, forty years, loved dogs, and Becky, that's, she's home. But I truly feel that this dog is in danger. Because he does this in an unprovoked manner. And the rescue would take her back. And I don't want to see him used either. Um, I don't mind if he stays, but you mentioned that, I think you said the fence has two feet deep, right? Right now, it's just like chicken, rattling, digging against my fence, so it's not going to stop.
Yeah, so we'll get to that. Is there some, thank you very much.
But, you know, if it were buried under two feet, and, but I'm, I'm still worried that, you know.
And, and you've seen the dog out those subsequent to this fight, uh, off-leash. Now, you've seen the dog off-leash after this fight?
In the, in the year.
With the electric collar, with the,
I didn't know if he had an electric collar.
Yeah, with the electric collar.
I know I've used electric collars, so I go over and say, again.
Yeah.
When you say electric collar, so you have, electric fence.
Right.
What, so you see that he leaves and then you shock him?
Shock him like if I'm, that's what I do, is I just, right in the backyard, you know, I'm like, it's not the best, but absolutely not. Like, it's not what I would want. Um, but, um, I take him, I stay right with him. Um, he has the shock collar, so, I mean, he's literally always right next to me, um.
But you, you understand, though, that it's going to be less final option here. It's going to have to be a short lead, even your backyard, unless your back, your backyard is going to be fenced in a very short time. For the substantial things for this to be happening. So I, I, I'm very concerned that after this fight, the dog is still out loose. I don't know if you're taking it seriously enough. Now, when I hear the dogs out, I've got, my, my, my brother-in-law has it, not from a fight, but by, by, nephew has a, uh, has a shock collar on his dog for hunting and stuff, and it startles him. It's not stopping him, you know, and, uh, but anyway, it's, uh, this is a pretty, this is quite serious and it's going to take quite serious, you know, actions.
You know, if the dog be relocated.
That's not an option now.
The, the lead on.
Although we've been, you know, I can, there's somebody else on the screen that wants to be, yeah, I just, don't worry.
I'm sorry.
Hillary, did you want to say something on screen? If you do, you're on you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't even realize that I was raised.
The volume just down maybe?
Took herself, well, maybe she's just watching.
Since it's international, I don't know if we are taking people off Zoom. Everybody else came in, so I'll rescind my request to speak, um. All right, so I'm just back.
I think my, my concern with that is, is when I took the dog off of quarantine, I made it clear to her that this was a public safety issue. And although I didn't order a temporary muzzle order, I made it clear that I could not have the dog off-leash, that the dog should be muzzled. And the fact that the dog is still off-leash, not muzzled, that, that she's not taking my word of advice seriously is my concern.
That's, unfortunately, I mean, you can, Any other residents, we're not in the area that we have not seen the attack, have any comments? Sir, as they'd like to spread.
My name is Deb Shepherd, and I wasn't prepared to speak tonight. Um, I'm also very much an animal lover. Um, I just want to mention, this is addition to what Erin said. Um, I live next to Erin, and, um, the, the bus stop for her children is right on the border of my property, so right on Concord, Concord and Ticonderoga. So every morning I see her children out there, um. And since the attack, it's always on my mind, dogs in the backyard, what if they come running, you know? I have seen the dogs out in the back once unleashed. I saw them, um, there. Um, I also want to mention that our neighborhood is very active with walkers, especially walkers in our neighborhood, um. You know, walkers pushing baby strollers, and also, um, we have someone in the neighborhood that's in a wheelchair as well. So, um, it's always been a concern now since this happened, like, I see people walking by, if I see they're out in the backyard, could they come running? Um, so I just wanted to add this.
All right, anybody else like to make a statement or comment?
That I only have them out, like, oh, I'm sorry. I now only have them out, well, like, just to pee and poo, really. I mean, I've had, like, for a second just run, but I didn't, I thought that the collection collar would be okay with the vet, with the vets. I'm sorry, um, and I have them on, so.
All right, so we close the hearing and we can discuss.
Oh, well. Great, I make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
Second.
Moved in second to close the public portion of the hearing, public opinion closing.
Hi.
Close, that's again, we make the public comment sections closed. We can deliberate amongst ourselves now a little bit about it. Discuss options. We may ask. All right, I guess my concern is the number of children in the neighborhood and and quite honestly, this, the other dog we've done, always been, of course, six. We've never had to go to the UCA first. And I, I need to have confidence. These, if these six things were done, I had confidence they would be done, I would, it become, my fear is, I don't know financially the wherewithal to be able to build a fence that will keep a dog that big in the backyard and the ability to put, secure the hundred thousand, sure, the hundred thousand dollar, um, insurance bond. And those are, and if any of these things are missed, then it would move to UCA, you know, because it is, I guess the question I'm struggling with is, do we give it a chance or not?
The problem, the only problem with that is the only thing that you need to consider with that is that there would be a failure.
Yeah.
There would be another incident that would then lead to that. So that's, that's really the question on the table.
Yeah, I think that's where I, that's, that's my biggest concern, failure to meet fees if something were out of, um, that's rough.
Um, I have a question for you, Erin.
Yes.
This list, so, I have, let's, um, if the key, if doesn't ever want to let the dog out of the house, just lets the dog out on a leash to do business or walk with the muzzle, does she have to build the fence?
No, you have to order one or more of the following. And do you have chapter one forty, section one fifty-seven?
You know what I'm saying?
Uh, Yeah, so, so is this, is this listed you gave us, chapter one?
No, do you have, so chapter one forty, section one fifty-seven. If you do, so first of all, you need to decide whether or not you're deeming the dog dangerous.
So let's, let's, so first that is, is the dog.
Right, you need to decide whether you want.
I think we need to take a vote on that.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll take a motion on it. Anybody can make a motion.
Thanks, Ellen. I move to declare the dog dangerous.
All those in favor?
No, seven.
Oh, second, second, sorry.
Steal my line. All in favor of clearing the dog dangerous?
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, it's, it passes unanimously. We are certifying the dog as dangerous.
Okay, what's number two, Erin?
So then, that's, you have to order, you can order as many as you want, but you have to at least one or more of those.
One or more of these six items.
Okay.
Do you leave these out of your?
Yes, those are my, yes. You, I'm recommending all six.
And I'm,
That's the minimum.
Yeah, and, and I guess, I'm at least going that far.
Right.
And just to show, I just don't, I don't want a child to be the reason this is violated in the UCA. I'll feel horrible if that's the worst, and, and, and quite honestly, it would be a horrible thing.
Right.
Um, and I don't think anybody wants that. And that's the, the problem we're facing there. I don't have a strong degree of confidence in a chicken wire fence that's not adequate to be built. Now, this is going to cost real money. I built fences at my, at my house, you know, and um, how long do we give and, and how do we check, investigate?
It tells you, like, you have, you know, thirty days.
So do you have a, Becky, do you have a, a, a plan? Do you have a plan? You, what are recommendations? Do, do, do you have a plan with, with Jake Surtens?
Uh, not Jake Surtens, because, um, sorry. Um, uh, with the, building a fence, I need to, um, figure that out and speak, so, have some conversations, so. But, um, everything else, uh, I mean, I need to see the list. I guess, I could look at it so I can, okay, because then I can let you know, timeline or.
I, I think we'll take a timeline.
Sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
No, it's in the, the, the chapter. It gives you how many days it's in the section. I believe it's thirty days.
And ten days of the order. That's what they do, you know.
The thing is,
I, I think, I think you take your own question.
As much as there's a concern that maybe you're not taking this seriously, I mean, we have, I have a concern that you, you, you don't put the dog on a leash. You're next to the dog with a,
I mean, I,
you not on a leash?
No, I, I do.
And do you have a muzzle?
Yes, I have a.
So that would be number one. To show that they're taking this very serious.
Yeah, yes.
And then you work on the friend, the bond. Yeah, that's, you know, you generally pick this one, not that one. Um, and you pick away at this, at this list, but number one is a leash, a muzzle.
Yes.
Not stand the next door, watch, you know, neighbors see this dog one, one more time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I,
I'm, I'm heading towards that right now. My problem, this, this would be the first one that I've ever considered putting down, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, I, we, we, I, I just have, you know, just concerns about the number of children there and the fact it was done for both bike. And the neighborhood seemed quite in fear of this dog. Um, there's been a lot of people that said they wish that we, it wasn't put down, but that they're afraid for the kids to go outside. So it's a question of,
Never, I would never, that, that killed me here, you know, I don't want that, you know, at all.
Yeah, well, I mean, the reality is, and I understand why they're in fear of the dog. I, I, I get it. I mean, I, I don't think that's an unreasonable position to be in. Um, if I'd heard you have the dog walked in the house the entire time, um,
I pretty much do.
That pretty, because you pretty much stay in the house until it's been through beauty's hands, you know?
I'm, I'm, yeah, I have to take, you know, to, well, that, I mean.
So, um, I'll listen for motions from anybody on this one. And we can see what's going to go with it. I mean, my, my only thing is, if we do the first six options, it's got to be thirty days. It has to be inspected in thirty days, meets compliance, you know, as, um, it's got to be inspected, it's got to be cleared. If there's one more violation, there is no, there's no mercy on this. The dog is seen outside without a leash.
The only one I'm nervous about, I like that, but the only one I'm nervous about is the fence. In thirty days, it's a, that's a big, I don't think that it, right, and I think maybe by the end of the summer, you can get it together, but I think within thirty days, probably not. But again, if you run a leash, a muzzle in your house, take your time on the fence, but, I mean, that's just my,
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, I mean, a leash and a muzzle, that's.
And one sided, one sided.
Yeah. Why did you recommend the fence in this, because we did on another one, and you might not have been, remember?
No, they, they, they had Larry's one, and he couldn't have a fence. That's a secure pen. That's a, that's an actual pen. That's not even a fence.
Okay, so this would be, this is even,
He's not even allowed out on.
So this would be him in a secure pen in the back.
Down, down deep. He's not even allowed off, off of three feet, off of three feet. It's like a dog pen, like kennel run.
So that fits.
So he doesn't even have, like a, like a kennel run that's dug two feet into the,
You mean the post?
Post, yeah. So it's, it's like a kennel, it's not like an actual fence around her house. It's like a enclosure. So he's not even getting free range to run around the backyard. He's going to be on a three-foot leash. And if he's in, in the pen as what's described there.
Okay, it's not fitting the backyard, just building a dog run or?
And locked, so it needs to be locked, so, um.
Right. Sorry, I'm just going to say it. I think the dog needs to be euthanized. That's just my opinion based on the severity of those injuries and the unprovoked attack. And the, the chance of this could, could be a child, not, you know, it luckily wasn't, but that, that level of damage on a child would have been catastrophic. Um, and I have dogs, and I'm sorry, it's a difficult, but. I made sure, like, usually, like, when I saw someone coming, like, I went in, um, it was nice to be, but usually I was just go, I would bring them back in.
I, you know, I, I'm four now, which is sad. I, I,
If you build a pen this weekend.
The fact you're building a fence is going to be deep in the ground. You're going to have to contract that, you know, this is, this is a pretty significant effort. Um, Guess I have to swing. Read the room here. Yeah. I. I am concerned about the children there. I am concerned about the ability to follow through this. The absolute safest answer is the euthanasia. Uh, it's the one that does protect the children of the neighborhood. Um. If. If the dog hasn't been out, I would have been, and it hasn't been out this. You know, I, I, I'm gonna go with the euthanasia. I just, I hate to say that. I, I, but it's, it's too much of a risk with the children around. My fear. I'd kill to say that, but I mean, this dog is a very big dog. Um, I understand, I haven't seen this dog in particular.
It's. Station the front, sorry, I didn't.
Yeah.
But it's been off station of the front at all. Way back, like, it's that, that, like.
Yeah, um. I'll think of, if you can make a.
Well, second or. Right. I move that we euthanize the dog.
Yeah, I'll.
Yes.
Put that unless you want.
Please, no.
Yeah. It's very painful. I'll, I'll second the motion, but it's very painful to do that. Um. It's just too risky with the children, is my opinion. So I'm going to. Um. All, all in favor of euthanizing? I, I. Hosed. Um. So it's two in favor and one of us, I'm, I'm smart. So euthanizing passes. I'm dying, it's very hot. It's the last thing I wanted to do. I was put on the horse, so I couldn't die, because they want to secure yours. Too risky. All right. So anything else from the board?
They'll, they'll have to write up the order. We'll talk tomorrow, yeah.
Very good. Okay, thank you much for going to executive session for discussing legal contracts and, uh. Uh, negotiations, uh, that would, uh. Adversely affect the discussions if they were all been, like, forum, we'll adjourn from executive session only if we're adjourned.
Okay.
All the board is there, we're going to do that, so, Erin.
Hi.
Ellen.
Hi.
Greg, hi.